Counsel, just give us guidance. May we do your will. Thank you for this and thank you for this evening and the blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, please rise for the flag salute and remove your caps.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Go quickly through roll call. Seth?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Kathleen? Rob?
Here.
Indra?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Joel?
Here.
Victoria?
Here.
And myself. Looks like we have a full house tonight and our agenda has two items on for public hearing. To make it a little bit... Yes, Indra?
I would like to pull an item out of the consent agenda. Item D for discussion. Is it D? Yes.
Okay, so pulling item D out of the consent agenda with intentions for... What would you like?
I would like to discuss that amongst the council.
Would you like...
Before we vote on it.
Would you like staff to give an update on that before discussion or you just want to pull it out and have discussion for council?
We can do it now or later?
No, no, not now. When consent agenda...
Yes, I would like that. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so item D will be basically starred for the consent agenda and we will take time to consult with staff on that topic and have discussion amongst council members. Okay, back to agenda. Public hearing has two items on it right now. We are going to reverse the order because it actually comes a little bit more congruent with the rest of the agenda. So first item up will be for Applebee's IHOP and at this time I will open the public hearing to consider the application as filed. The application for IHOP or Applebee's slash IHOP 250 Northeast Agnes Avenue Sign Code Appeal. We will begin the hearing with the staff report followed by a presentation by the applicant, statements by persons in favor of the applications, statements by persons in opposition to the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by the applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Seeing none, do any counselors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? Seeing none, are there any counselors who wish to disclose discussions, contact, or other ex parte information they have received prior to this meeting regarding this application? Seeing none. This is a hearing... In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the Development Code. All testimony which applies to this case are noted in the staff report. If you would like a copy of this report, please write that on a note to the city manager and one can be provided. It is important to remember if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to this issue, you will not be able to appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. The hearing will now proceed with a report from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Bradley Clark with Community Development. I'm going to go over the staff report and then I believe we do have representatives from both the property owner here tonight as well as Western Signs here in the back. So there will be an applicant presentation and testimony as well. So just a few things to get you oriented. I don't believe that the newer council have had a signed appeal yet, so we just wanted to bring this side in to kind of just orient you a little bit. So every once in a while, sign applications come in. Almost all of them are staff level. Every once in a while, there's a few that don't meet the criteria that are in the code. So there is a provision in the code that says they can appeal to the city council. That's in Section 9.21.160. The request here is to modify an existing legal nonconforming sign. Nonconforming just basically means at one point it was permitted and legal and then due to code changes, it became not conforming to the ordinance. The ordinance standards changed. So the existing sign exceeds the maximum freestanding size as well as the square footage size. Getting to the bottom of this first bullet there, so Section 9.21.160A1, this deals with maximum height. So in the general commercial zone, the maximum height is 25 feet. The maximum square footage for the size of the sign is 100 square feet. So the sign that is being proposed now is modifying both of those features. They want to change the 100-foot height is actually not proposed to change. The sign is already there. The sign structure is there. They just want to keep the height the way it is. But because they're proposing to modify the sign, we at staff can't do that because normally you would have to comply with the height. So the height is 100 feet, is 25 feet max in the code. The existing sign is 100 feet tall. It was approved back in 2001. Hasn't been changed since, so this is the first modification being proposed. It is grandfathered in, but modifications other than a reface have to comply with current sign code standards. In this case, they are proposing more than just a reface. So that's what's triggering the appeal. We're talking about the property at 250 Northeast Agnes. That's the current Applebee's restaurant and the sign is proposed to be modified to change the existing sign cabinet for Applebee's and then add a second sign cabinet for the IHOP restaurant on the same property. So here is the location. You all know where it is. The interchange is just to the right here. This is the Dutch Bros across the street and the Sherry's Restaurant and the Elmer's Restaurant. Those are out the four corners there. Here is just a site plan that was approved back in 2001 showing the sign as it is today and the fact that it was approved. Here's just a photograph showing that existing sign. Again, it's 100 feet tall and today's sign does have the extension on the top of it. You can see there with the architectural projection for the apple. And here is the proposed sign that takes off that existing cabinet at the top and they're proposing to replace that with two rectangular cabinet signs, one for Applebee's and one for IHOP. So again, the call to action is tonight. There is no 120-day rule on this. The request again is to allow for them to keep the sign at the current height and exceed the square footage in order to accommodate both of these new restaurants or the new restaurant, the IHOP. So there's a recommended motion on the screen there and that's all for the staff report. As I mentioned, we do have the applicant here.
Perfect. The applicant is online?
I have a question, client question for staff.
Yeah, just one second. I'm just trying to clarify where they are. They are in-house? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Any questions for staff?
So general commercially, say 25 feet. Brad is maximum height. So do we have any kind of freeway overlay zone?
I'm sorry, what overlay?
Do we have any kind of freeway overlay zone?
Freeway, we do not.
Okay, and we did have that prior to '05, I believe, or no?
Oh, I can't answer that question. I don't know.
Yes, it was repealed.
Okay.
Sounds like the applicant may be able to answer that question, counsel.
Okay, so at one time it was considered so that people could, from the freeway, be able to see businesses like this. At one time, it was considered more than 25 feet would be reasonable. But I guess...
Yes, right.
Somebody from the audience is telling us in '05 that was changed.
Right, and that is why we wanted to include that permit from 2001 so that you could see there. It did at the time meet the city code.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Rick?
Thank you, Brad. So just further clarification. Didn't ODOT used to be a player whenever something was visible from the freeway that they had input on signs or is that some...
They do, but this is further than what that buffer is. There is a distance from Oregon Department of Transportation right of way where they do need to review those, but I think this exceeds that distance.
Okay, and two other questions. Where's Applebee's? Where is the location for IHOP to be on that piece of property?
So the existing building that you see here on the slide behind me is going to accommodate both establishments, as I understand it. This might be a better question for the applicant, but there is no application to add a building or to expand the building. The only application is to signage.
And last question. You were showing... Could you go back to the slide that shows both signs? As a graphics person, I feel... I sense the Applebee's lettering is much smaller and would be harder to read from the freeway and I didn't know compared to the current one. I didn't know if they gave any consideration for that. That's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and to that last question, counselor, we as city staff don't have any real authority to comment on that. If the overall dimensions comply with the ordinance, then, you know, they can propose whatever font size they want.
Okay, any further questions for staff? And I apologize. Normally, we have the applicant can have his presentation time, but were you present here for just to answer questions or did you want to present some more information to us?
I could... I'm sorry. If I may interject, this is Valerie Tové. I'm with Dine Brands Global representing IHOP, Applebee's, and we also own Fuzzies.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead.
Am I in a little time now?
Yes, you can. Thank you.
So, and I have not yet communicated in depth with Western Signs, but to answer a couple of questions. We are bringing to this location our newest concept for the brand and again, I represent IHOP, Applebee's, and Fuzzies. And so since we own all three brands with dual brands, what we're doing is we're bringing our two strongest brands together within one building envelope and that would be IHOP and Applebee's. So the reason for adding the cabinet is so that we can represent that both brands are within that location. I don't believe that we are actually changing the font size of the Applebee's as existing, just as a comment. We're just keeping... We're just re-facing the sign with our newest sign design and then adding the IHOP cabinet. That would be our proposal. I just want to make sure that I'm here to answer any... I just want to make sure that I'm here to answer any questions, but I just want to provide some clarity to why it is that we're proposing the added cabinet.
Very good, and thank you for your input. I do apologize, I didn't realize that you were online with us. But now I will bring it back to council. Do you have any further questions for staff or anybody in regards to this? All right, thank you. At this time, is there anybody within the public or attending here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none? Is there anybody in the public or attending here who would like to speak in opposition of this application? Seeing none? We'll give it back to applicant. Do you have any final statements before we go into discussion?
I have a final statement.
Thank you.
It is very important for us to be able to represent both brands, especially because of the momentum that we're looking to have with our dual brands rollout. It's a very special, very exciting time for us as a brand, and it's very important for us to be able to represent and identify our concept that we've developed, which is to house both brands within the same building envelope. So just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you very much.
Clint, do you have a question for us?
Yes, one more question from Rob?
Yeah.
Sure.
So I don't, I would imagine that IHOP would, or doing these two brands together, would increase your hours of operation. And I'm just curious as to how many more jobs might that bring?
So we do increase our staff significantly. Hours of operation, I'm going to have to defer to David or Sam Solomoni, our franchisee, who actually has just recently joined. But we are going to expand our hours of operation, I believe, and staff will definitely increase significantly because now we will have employees for the IHOP and the Applebee's as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back to council for further discussion and/or action. Kathleen?
I move that the city council approve the request to modify the existing Applebee's freestanding sign, including proposed height and square footage dimensions with the conditions listed in the staff report.
We got a second from a few people. I'll take a second from Seth. So there's a motion on the table to approve with a second from Seth. Any further discussion? All right, go through a roll call vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And Seth?
Yes.
Unanimously passes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. We have a public hearing for FY '26 budget. At this time, I will open the public hearing to consider the application. Oh, sorry.
It's just a normal public hearing.
Go ahead. Then I will just hand the mic over to Mr. Aaron and have him take it away.
Good evening, mayor, council, members of the public. I'm here to provide you an update and open the public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year '26 budget and the use of state revenue sharing amounts included in the fiscal year '26 budget. So I'll be addressing both of those items in my presentation today. Following the public hearing, there's a couple of council action items that will follow that we're asking for your direction on in the adoption of resolutions. Overview, we'll have a public hearing that provides an overview of the budget process that we all experienced, the budget summary, and we'll talk about state revenue sharing. There's going to be three call actions, and we'll take them in the order of 2C, 2A, and 2B on your agenda. The first is declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues. The second is a resolution levying taxes and categorizing taxes. And the third is the actual adoption of the budget. The purpose of local budget law is to establish standard procedures. The cities throughout the state of Oregon do something very similar to what we're doing. And all of them, if you look at their calendars for the month of June, they're adopting their budget similar to what we're doing. It outlines programs and fiscal policies associated with the city. It does require some estimates of resources and expenditures, and those are made in good faith. It encourages citizen involvement, and it controls expenditures of public funds and provides the allocation of resources. It is truly a financial plan. We do one-year annual budgeting. It's based on estimates, and the budget is the basis for appropriations, which creates the authority to spend public dollars. Just as a breakdown of what we've done so far, May 13th, we did receive the budget message, went over some departments. May 15th, we did Public Works. May 20th, we did Administration of Finance. The Budget Committee voted at its May 20th, '25 meeting to approve the fiscal year budget as approved, and also the city's tax rates to be levied. The committee approved the budget. It was published in June 11th, 2025, meaning the publication requirements for the state of Oregon. The process of making any further budget changes at the council level, if any, can be discussed before acting on the resolution to adopt the fiscal year budget. After the hearing is held, several resolutions will need to be acted on later on in this meeting. So one of the important things is cities, high-performing cities and organizations, of course, adopt a strategic plan before they do budgeting process. Our strategic plan has five primary goals, which are shown behind me. Those goals are supported by six outcomes, which are supported by 29 expected results, and then 89 initiatives to make those things happen and achieve council's goals. Here, just as a budget background, you have, shown in green, all the departments and divisions that meet our financial parameters. In fiscal year '26, there are two that aren't, garage operations and facilities management. And from a standpoint of garage operations, that is because we're slightly above, which is a good thing. So we'll look at potentially the need of maybe reducing our fees that we charge in order to keep that within our financial parameters. When it comes to facilities management, the reason why that is red is because we added, as you know, about $371,000 for the operation of our resting sites. We know that's temporary in nature, and we didn't think it was appropriate for us to also raise our reserve based on that temporary operation. So we're hoping that that'll go away in the future, and our reserves will be within the green. So that's the only reason why I see facilities management in the red right now. Just want to provide also a view of our compliance in the future, because this is something that we'll need to be addressing, and you are taking on that challenge. Say, for instance, June 30th, we're going to start talking about public safety funding, police and fires funding and service levels. But if you look at our fiscal year '27, you'll see that there's a lot more red than there is in fiscal year '26. That's because we are projecting some potential shortfalls in our contingency funds if we continue without either a change in level of service or additional revenues. Overall, the budget is $240 million. Of that, the general fund is, represents 23%. Enterprise funds represent 44%. Where the money comes from, really, there's two main revenues for the city. The red says fees and charges. That's really your utility fees. That's the utility fees that we charge for our residents and our businesses within the community. That represents sewer, water, wastewater, transportation, stormwater. That is where we receive those revenues that are shown in red. The blue are property taxes, and that's the property taxes, which include our permanent property tax rate, along with our $1.79 levy. Where does the money go? Almost 60% of our money goes to personal services. So we have approximately 250 FTE, and those individuals are required in order to operate our plants, to patrol our communities, and help keep our communities safe. When you break down operating costs by program, you'll see here that public safety, and that's, I think, one of the reasons why you're addressing that on June 30th, our two, one of our two largest expenses is police and fire. Why? Our number one resource, which is our personnel, comes at a cost. And the, there's a large portion of our personnel that come and, that are associated with police and fire. From a general fund perspective, I mentioned this before in the budget meeting, but just for those maybe in the audience that weren't present, our expenditure category, when it comes to general fund, is personnel. That's our largest cost, is people. In order for us to process planning permits, in order for us to patrol our streets, to protect our buildings from fire, to respond to 911 calls, to keep our parks open and clean and in good order, it takes people. And so when it comes to general fund, our largest expense is personnel. From a utility perspective, it's a little different. Personnel is an expense, but it's not the largest expense, transfers are. And those transfers really represent transfers to capital projects. It takes hard money in order to keep our infrastructure in good maintenance and in operating condition. And so that's what that represents. I want to specifically talk also in this public hearing about state revenue sharing. It's one of those requirements that we need to do in June of each year. The state revenue sharing law does require cities to annually declare their intention to receive state revenue sharing money. If we don't, we don't get the state revenue sharing money, which is, in this situation, about $513,000. So we want to have this discussion in this public meeting today. The budget hearing held on May 20th, 2025, and this hearing met the statutory hearing requirements for us to receive those state revenues. We just have to declare that. We are talking specifically about the state's liquor tax collections for this, the use of the funds. Part of it is general support resources from policy and legislation, fire, rescue, police, and community development. For fiscal year '26, we're budgeting $513,000. Again, this is just a little highlight from a state perspective about OLCC and how much they've contributed to Oregon programs, over $630 million, with 80 million going to cities. Our portion is $513,000. Here you'll see here, which is on, in your packet on page 338, it'll show a breakdown of some of the state revenue sharing. From a state revenue sharing perspective, we have cigarette tax, liquor tax, and some other things. When it comes to our marijuana tax, it's, we've got both state and local, as you see here, and that is provided and dedicated to police. We have a state gas tax where we get $3.2 million. That all goes to streets by law. And then we've got our $513,000 that we mentioned with regards to, which is right here, state revenue sharing for our liquor tax. In summary, we have a balanced budget. Capital budgets are addressing our highest priorities. There's still work ahead, as I mentioned, to meet the challenges that we try to maintain service levels. And I'm happy to say that the community and city council and staff is ready to meet those challenges. Before I conclude, I do want to thank everyone, including city council, the budget committee members, those public members that are part of the budget committee, city staff, for their dedicated work. It takes months to put a budget together. It takes some time to put a strategic plan together. Council put a lot of extra time in strategic planning and into your workshops and your budget committee meetings. After council's adoption, this budget will go and be submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for our 41st Annual Award. And then I'm going to pause there, and I'll save those for the council action items, which will follow after you take public comment.
Okay, so at this point, we, do you guys have any questions so far? No? Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. Does anybody want to, from the audience, want to come up and address council in regards to this matter? Seeing none?
I have a question, just a question.
Specifically to this topic?
I believe so.
Okay.
Because, I mean, we were talking about the marijuana tax.
Okay.
And when the marijuana tax
Same procedure, state your name and go. Thank you.
Sorry.
You're good.
Shoney Nelson, Grants Pass, Oregon.
Thank you, sir.
So when the marijuana tax was put out there, from what I remember as a taxpayer, it was put out to us that that money was supposed to go towards rehabilitation and mental health help. And I don't remember how many millions haven't been found of that, of that tax, but I thought there was a pretty big chunk that sort of went somewhere and didn't go to those. And I'm just sort of curious on that. That's kind of what I'm asking, wasn't part of that tax supposed to go towards rehabilitation and mental health help?
This is a portion for you to make a public comment?
What was that?
This is a comment section, not questions. We won't address that.
Got you, got you. So things to think about on that, when they did it, when they put it for us to talk about those taxes, and they said, you're going to vote for it. It was in there for us to vote for it, with that in mind of those taxes going towards rehabilitation and mental health help.
Thank you. Any further public comment to weigh in on the issue, a topic at hand? All right, seeing none? Counsel, do you have any questions? Kathleen?
So it's just kind of astonishing that $637 million go to Oregon programs and 80 million only goes to the cities. That's wild, wildly low.
Yeah, they usually have like 50, 30, 20 splits, where 50, the state gets 50%, counties get 30, and cities get 20%. Our portion is $513,000.
Yeah, it's a wonder where all that other is going.
Thank you, and we are still at questions time. Does anybody have any further questions? Seeing none? Go back to you.
All right, so if that concludes, that does conclude public hearing. The next item, then I would open up, mayor, is for us to go ahead and move forward with council action items, and us addressing the first one, which would be on the screen, might not be in exact order within your packet, but it's C, 2C, we start with 2C.
Okay.
And the potential motion is in front of you. What we're looking for is the city's election to receive state shared revenues. As I mentioned before, we need to pass a resolution stating that we support that. That will allow us to receive the $513,000.
Victoria?
I move to approve the resolution to receive state shared revenues for the next fiscal year.
We have a second from Seth. So we have a motion on the table to approve with a second from Seth. Any further discussion? All right, Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathleen? Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, mayor, the next one in order here would be 2A. And at this one, what we're asking is the resolution that would declare and categorize our property taxes at a rate of 4.1335 per thousand of assessed value for our permanent rate, and $1.79 for our public safety local option levy. And a potential motion is on the screen.
Back to council for any questions or discussion. Seth, you're first? Or Rick? Do you fight over it?
I'd like to make a motion to move to approve the resolution to the levy and categorize property taxes fiscal year 2026. You're asking for questions?
I was just asking if you had any further questions before you made them, but you can go ahead with the motion, that's absolutely fine. A second from Eric. So we have a motion on the desk to approve with a second. Any further discussion? None? Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Unanimously passes, thank you.
Great, thank you, mayor. And then the third and final one for the budget would be, until we get into urban renewal, which we'll do later on in the meeting, is a resolution adopting the budget and making appropriations. And there's a potential motion.
Thank you. Joel?
I just had some discussion for us. You know, at the budget meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion concerning non-bargaining unit salaries. And when you looked at the budget and that line item, the response from staff at that point in time, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, that that was a council thing, not a budget committee thing. Um, and there is, in several different of those line items, there's several substantive increases that caused us to find out more about them, um, and have a task force to do that. And so I'm kind of reluctant to put forth, uh, approving the budget than knowing that the task force is going to be coming out. Um, and I'm okay with the rest of the budget, but, um, I think for the credibility with the citizens, for both staff and, and the council, um, that our resolution should say we, we, we're going to approve the, uh, budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 26 with the exception of the salaries for non-bargaining units, which we will do after we get the report back from the, uh, task force. And when I look at our goal, uh, besides, you know, I don't work for the newspaper. I, I don't work for the staff, I work for the citizens. And, uh, this is done in that light, um, and, uh, not, not saying that anybody did anything wrong or anything. Um, but our, our budget hearing goal is fiscal stability by, by maintaining the city's fiscal health while appropriating the fiscal resources necessary to accomplish council's goals. And if that means that we have the increase as proposed and, and the task force finds that it's true and we agree with it, then we go with it. If, if it's less than that, um, then we, we go with that as well. But I think we need to maintain that, uh, our credibility with our stakeholders, um, and not just rubber stamp it.
So the budget is just an allocation of resources. It doesn't have anything to do with approving things. You also have in the budget, uh, the potential of allocation of resources for three other collective bargaining agreements and dollars so you can bargain with those three collective bargaining agreements. Does not mean you're going to give them that, the, what we potentially have budgeted for them, but it's there for your potential appropriation. So it's not approving any, anything, just like you have not approved a collective bargaining agreement.
I understand that fully, Eric.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing it out.
So Joel, you're, you were just trying to make a statement? Or did you want to make a, I mean, I kind of felt there was a motion in there.
I'll listen to the rest of the comments.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have any further comments? Discussion? Uh, Indra?
I would agree, uh, with Joel. I think there was a lot of controversy surrounding that, and I understand that it's a placeholder, but I think by approving the budget and having this placeholder, um, will not sit well with the public, that that's what we're going to do. So, um, I agree with Joel that I, I'm fine with the rest of it, but we should hold off on that bit.
So I have some things to chime in here. So legally, you have to adopt, adopt a budget by June 30th to operate on July 1st. If you do not, I, we don't come into work technically, and we are held personally liable. So I need a resolution adoption. Now again, year in and year out, we do put estimations in there for all the bargaining agreements, and so it's not uncommon for us to go through this practice where you approve something where potentially, like Aaron's saying, you don't necessarily go through with that actual, um, proposal that is in the budget as far as an estimation. Again, it's up to council. The task force will happen as the task force will happen. That doesn't mean that we spend those dollars. Just because we put $10,000 in for electricity doesn't mean we just give the electric company $10,000 either.
Go ahead, Indra.
Is it possible to place, hold that money somewhere else out of the budget and then we adopt the budget as it is without that amount and that's held elsewhere?
So I recommend if you want to do that, what we would do is adopt the budget tonight, and then based on what the task force comes back with, if you're uncomfortable with having those appropriation levels, we would come back with a supplemental budget like we did two months ago, and we would remove those out of those budgets if that is the purview of the council.
Victoria?
Uh, on June 30th, we have a workshop, so if we were to do that, we could visit that on, um, the 30th and, um, so that we would be able to come back to work on July 1st, just pointing that out.
Uh, technically you have to, there's so many rules with public hearings like we're having today, and there's a 10% rule. If you're going to change, uh, appropriations in a fund by 10%, then I actually have to send it back to the budget committee to have another decision. So we're out of time, so to speak.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And Rob, did you want to weigh in?
Uh, I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Yeah, we're in discussion at this moment.
Okay. Uh, I just want to share with the rest of council, if I approve this budget tonight, frankly, I feel absolutely no pressure to, um, provide the raises that were proposed. Unless the task force was very strongly in favor of them, I might consider it. But the fact is, there's a lot of things in the budget that, a few of them have been mentioned, there's other things in the budget that, uh, we have to vote on later. I have no problem approving this budget tonight, and again, I feel, I don't know about the rest of you, I don't, this doesn't add any pressure to me at all to approve the raises by knowing that the money is there.
Thank you, Rob. Any further discussion? Joel?
Um, the way I understand the budget works in terms of, um, changes to the budget, if we increase the budget by over 10%, it requires going back to the budget committee. If we reduce it, it doesn't.
Yes, I believe that's theoretically correct.
Yeah, so, so if, if we approve the budget tonight, and I understand what Rob's saying, and I could support that as well, um, but if we, if we only did not approve at this point in time, the, the, um, um, wages for the non-bargaining unit, um, that would be a, uh, a, a reduction that, that wouldn't have to go back to the budget committee. But, and obviously, there's going to be some kind of form of, of salaries there, um, and it'll probably be, uh, a decrease, it won't be an increase.
The problem I worry about is what is the decrease supposed to look like if the task force is potentially supposed to decide that later?
I'm sorry, if, if the task force decides what?
So my problem potentially is what number do I decrease it to if the task force is set to do that?
Yeah, but I bet you have to be, that's why I, I feel-
Your mic, your microphone, counselor. Your microphone.
Um, yeah, and, and I'm with you. I, I don't under, I don't know what that would be, um, and I don't have the information here right now to, you know, approve an amount because I don't have the results of the task force and just to pay it. Uh, I understand what Rob's saying about, and I can support that, but my, my constituency, I, I need to maintain credibility with him, and so does staff, um, in, in good faith. And I'm not sure that through the budget process, just process-wise, that we're doing that. Uh, and so that's why I'm bringing up this point of order.
Again, approving the dollar amount in the budget does not approve a raise.
I understand.
There isn't technically an amount in the budget that's specifically for non-bargaining. There is a pot of money that's for contract negotiations and, and, and non-bargaining is included in that, it's this pot of money. So it's not like you have a line item specifically for that, that we would just look at reducing.
Yeah, I understand that also. There's, there, I think there's about 10 line items. Uh, I, I didn't, I didn't go back and count them, but there are line items, it's just not one.
Okay, um, back to council for any further discussion and/or some action? Seth?
Yeah, I'm just going to make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2026 budget.
And we've got a second from Victoria first, so you have a motion on the dais with a second to approve. Any further discussion? All right, uh, we'll go through a roll call. Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
No.
Uh, Victoria?
Yes.
So there's more guesses than no's.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay.
I was just trying to be helpful. There you go.
Thank you.
So next on the, thank you. Sorry, had to spin a little here. Um, uh, next on the agenda for council actions is a resolution adopting, uh, the addressing homelessness grant program, and I will turn the stage over to Stephanie.
Thank you, mayor, council. Welcome back. Um, I'm going to go over things briefly, not in a lot of detail, because I feel like we've spent quite a lot of time doing that over the past couple of weeks. What you have before you is the resolution for a potential grant program that would offer funding for capital expenses to address the needs of the homeless population in the city of Grants Pass. As we've talked about multiple times, this would support council's goal of housing and homelessness. Just a refresher on the background that has brought us to this point. December 31st of 2024, the city of Grants Pass had two resting sites with capacity exceeding 150. On January 6th, the largest site, uh, was closed and the limits of, at the remaining site were down to 5:00 PM to 7:00 AM. That was when the vote took place, not when it actually took effect. By January 30th, Disability Rights of Oregon filed suit claiming the regulations were not objectively reasonable and there was violation of nondiscrimination laws. And the court then issued an injunction prohibiting the city from enforcing laws regulating camping on public property. On February 19th, the city opened a second resting site and expanded the time period to 96 hours. Yet, we still had the injunction. On March 28th, there was a finding that the time regulation, that 96 hours, was reasonable, but the place and manner regulations were not. And so there, the injunction remains in place until the city has established 150 capacity with ADA compliance, and the court has lifted that injunction. Um, in order to respond to that, the city opened the additional spaces to exceed that 150 capacity with the ADA compliance. But as we've acknowledged on multiple occasions, the city provided resting sites are a temporary response, and Grants Pass needs low barrier shelter options. Uh, the city itself is not in the best position to provide those, and we do have community partners that appear interested in doing so. So to that end, we have developed the grant program over the last month. Um, if adopted, this opportunity would be issued tomorrow. Um, the final document would be posted, just like any other request for bids. Um, so it would be issued tomorrow with applications due July 18th, 2025. That's a just over four-week period. The city would be seeking an entity, one or more entities, to provide 24/7 managed low-barrier shelter capacity for at least 150 individuals that complies with ADA requirements, and there is a preference for additional support services beyond just the shelter services. Applications, um, any award based on an application would be required to comply with zoning regulations, be reasonably separated from socially sensitive areas, provide access to support services, and avoid environmentally sensitive areas. The funding would be for capital expenses only, not operations or personnel. There would be a requirement for regular reporting to, back to the council, both in the form of data and narratives. And grant agreements would contain remedies designed to protect the city's interests in the event a project is unsuccessful or non-compliant. At our last workshop, the council, uh, set the amount at 1.2 million dollars. However, beyond that would be considered, um, at the council's discretion, and no final source has yet been determined by council. That'll be done in the coming weeks, at or before the time that an award is actually granted. So I have our call to action date today, unless council wants to delay that or, uh, do something, one of the alternatives. And your alternatives are to approve the addressing homelessness grant program, to not approve the addressing homelessness grant program, or to table it to a later date for further discussion. And there is a potential motion on the screen for you.
Uh, thank you, Stephanie. Uh, at this time, I bring it back to council. Do you have any specific questions in regards to the presentation tonight or the grant program itself? Rob?
Yeah, it was a question that I asked on Monday, and I asked, I called Stephanie this morning also and asked again, and I was hoping that she was going to just, uh, come up with the answer, but as of yet, we haven't heard it. So we had a, uh, the issue with a low barrier, um, shelter, and the concept, one of the concepts there is that there, it's either illegal or it's not, actually, actually illegal, to ask for identification for people to go into a facility like this. And my question was, how do we know that, do, do sexual, convicted sexual offenders have to self-identify? How do we know that we're not going to have women and children in close proximity to a, a sex offender? And you were going to look up the answer and come back?
And I did that this afternoon.
Okay, what do we got?
Um, with, within 10 days of relocation, they are required to register with local law enforcement, and the, this, that applies no matter where they're at, but if they move to a facility, they would have to notify local law enforcement of their whereabouts.
Any further questions in regards to this, to Stephanie? All right, seeing none. At this time, um, we offer an opportunity for the public to address the council with comments. This is not a time to promote anyone's self or discourage anyone's self, but if you guys have comments directly related to the grant program that we've set forth, please now step up and address the mic. Please state your name, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. Julie Thomas, Josephine County resident. I just want to say thank you so much for taking this this far, because we now possibly have a solution in the near future. So thank you. I know it's a little bit scary and risky and courageous, but we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Any further public comment in regards to the grant program? Step up and restate your name, and you have two minutes.
Shoney Nelson, Grants Pass, Oregon. Mine is just something that happened that I wanted to share that does correlate to this. And that was, uh, so I do, um, influencing, and I was, um, responding to a message, a young lady had been sort of belligerent, and I was responding to that. Thought I was saying the right things, but I, I also believe in God, and it was interesting because she had said, well, I have the answer to the homelessness problem. And I was like, really? You do? All right, we'll throw that out there. And she told me to go to this address where they were having a function, and I was like, well, I'm going to prove you wrong, I'm going to go to it. And on the way to this address, it, it was really, I, this happened, it was crazy. But I'm driving down there, and it was a cloudy day. The sun took and cleared and came through those clouds. A rainbow showed up, and I swear, I'm driving towards where that rainbow was, and, uh, the function that was there was actually U-turn for Christ. And they were, um, talking about God and talking about helping people out, and that's where I ended up, and sat there and listened to the whole thing. And it was just wild. It changed a lot in my mind, and I just wanted to share that. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. That was a little off-topic, but thank you. Um, anybody else want to address council in regards to the grant program that we are discussing right now? Please state your name.
Brian Weldon, County. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, I've had a lot of discussions with Julie and a lot of discussions with, uh, with Jeremy, and they have a solution. The number one thing that I believe they're going to apply here is accountability. Um, Sunday, after our big protests there on Saturday in front of the courthouse, I decided to clean up all the trash from down at the other end of the courthouse up to A Street. Cleaning up all the trash, um, it was a mess. Lot of trash all the way down here to, to Fifth Street. This crazy guy laying out on the steps, I've sent you all an email, um, starts harassing everybody that drives by. He's been known by everybody in town here for doing this. He lives in the bushes at the Methodist church. I found all his drugs, his, his foils and wrappers. The police said that he is crazy, he's not on drugs. I don't believe that because I have a bucket full of his trash out here.
Hey, Brian, I don't want to interrupt you, but you got to bring it back to either the grant program, or you got to wait till the end of the, for this kind of stuff?
This is a solution.
Perfect.
To the unaccountability at A Street, 7th Street, and the other J Street project.
Thank you, thank you. All right, any other public comment in regards to the grant program that we're discussing at this moment? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. Um, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or action. Rob?
Yeah, thanks. I, I, uh, brought this up on Monday also, and I'm still, uh, uh, not completely satisfied with what we, uh, had discussed on Monday. So this is, um, we're potentially, um, going to offer over a million dollars in, in a grant to some organization. to some organization. I have concern that, uh, it's very likely that one of the organizations that's going to apply for this literally has no track record because they're brand-new. And, um, I, I would, I feel it's completely appropriate that if we're going to be, um, basically allocating over a million dollars in taxpayer money, that I would like to see a credit check and a background check on all the board members and the, and if they have a director at that point or a proposed director, so that we have some better idea of who it is that we'd be giving a million dollars of taxpayer money to. And it, it really shouldn't, uh, do anything but reinforce that that would be a viable organization, that it's respectable, that the people are very, um, high integrity. That's what I would hope, that those, those background checks and credit reports would, would demonstrate, which I think is, uh, I think that's what we owe the public, to ensure that their money is, is taking on as little risk as is reasonable.
Um, any further discussion? Kathleen?
Uh, I think we did address that at our workshop, and I think the attorney did say something to that effect, that that, maybe you could repeat what you said.
Because the funding would be to an entity and not individuals, we can't really ask the individuals to be providing that kind of information. I've never heard of a grant that ever did that, um, and that would be, most of those are also funded by taxpayer dollars. If you do want to have a little bit more, um, information regarding the organization or the history of organizations that the employees or agents are, have been associated with, I can put revision in the risk assessment section. Um, I do have some proposed language if the council wishes to do that, but, um, in general, what you're asking for as far as background checks and credit checks, that's just not done when it comes to grants.
Uh, thank you, Stephanie, and that was lengthy conversation in our last workshop. Uh, we are discussing the grant as we've proposed it. At this moment in time, is there any further discussion, or I'd be looking for action? Rob?
Yeah, we're, we're discussing as we proposed it, and, uh, but we actually didn't come up to a decision, so that's why I'm bringing this up. And when the attorney says that in general, it's not normally done that way, that doesn't mean that we can't do it that way, and in general, we're not dealing with brand-new organizations that have zero track record. So, to me, if I'm a member of the public, and I am, and it's my taxpayer dollars, and they are, um, how do I know that these people are, um, are trustworthy? How do, what, what indication do I have? I mean, I might have some personal knowledge about one or two of them, and it could be very positive. Other people may not know anybody who's, who's potentially on their board or one of their directors. So exactly, why should anyone feel comfortable? Uh, just because it's not generally done is not a reason or way that that's gonna make anybody feel comfortable.
Any, uh, Victoria, and then Indra?
So, I do know that, um, one of the potential applicants has many local partners, and one of them is UCAN, and UCAN has run a homeless shelter in Roseburg for over two years.
And I'm gonna have to stop here. We really don't, I, I ask, I ask the public not to, to campaign or for or against applicants that could be.
I'm answering directly to Rob's question.
I understand, but if, if we can keep our questions and our discussions directly to the, the, the grant and what's within it, then that would be great. Thank you.
Well, I, I, yeah, I was speaking directly to Rob's concern that, um, he stated that there was an organization that might apply that had no, um, no experience, but I wanted to point out, we've gotten the, um, the documents with the partners, and there are organizations partnering with potential applicants that do have over two years' experience running a homeless shelter.
Indra?
Um, okay, I guess I'll just, I, I just want to make clear, there is, because there seems to be consensus among some that this grant is going to one entity, um, but it's open to anybody to apply. So the city has not partnered with anyone, it's fully open, and we're gonna get applications, hopefully, to be able to review, to pick the best person, individual, or nonprofit that applies. So, um, I just want to make that clear. I, I guess my concern would be, Stephanie, if you had, uh, something with more teeth in the risk assessment, because my fear, if we don't get some of that information on who's involved, my fear would be that we, there could be an ugly discussion up here on the dais with things being brought up that shouldn't be, that we, you know, could just read about and know. So I don't, what, what do you, you said you had something proposed that would put more teeth in it? Can we hear that?
So first of all, keep in mind that you're talking about individuals and not entities. Um, one of the things about a board is that they can change people on there at any point. So you're only looking, you'd only be looking at a snapshot in time. They could give you a snapshot and turn around and replace their whole board, and it would do you no good to be able to judge. So keep that in mind. If you do want additional risk assessment components, because we're looking at a grant, um, one of the questions could be, we could add in, instead of just, has the organization ever had a grant award suspended or terminated for noncompliance? We could expand that to, has the organization or any other organization that any employee, officer, or board member is or has been an employee, officer, or board member of? So if they've been affiliated with any other organization, has that organization had any problems with grants? And that would expand it, if you're concerned about new entities that maybe don't have any history. And that would, if you want additional information, we, that would be my suggestion.
Excuse me, but that would be, that would be singling out individuals, because the way you just stated it is if an individual that was involved with the current organization was on a previous organization in a later date, did that organization, which would not even be involved in this grant, I think that's singling out single individuals.
Less so than just straight-up calling them out on, because what your explanation would be is, yes, there's been another entity, and here was the situation. It's less about the individual and more about their fiduciary obligations as part of that entity, because that's really what you're concerned about is, are they going to follow through with those obligations that come with being a part of the organization, and not, what are they doing in their personal time, or what has happened with that particular person? It's about an organization.
Exactly. It's about an organization that's applying for the grant, not an organization that that person worked for in the past that is not applying for the grant. That's my argument.
And I don't necessarily disagree with that, I'm just saying if council wants to expand it, this would be as close as I would get to singling out individuals and saying have, you know, identify your people and have they had any problems of X nature.
Thank you. Um, Rick, and then Kathleen, and then Joel?
As part of the discussion, I don't know, I'm comfortable going with additional rules and regulations, because what happens if somebody served on a previous committee, uh, a board on the previous board, and that organization went sideways, but that individual had nothing to do, in fact, um, they might be the only one that was against what happened, and yet, because they're associated with that board, it affects the impact. So I would, would like to leave the agreement as is.
Kathleen?
I just want to point out that the memorandum of understanding has six different ways to describe the partnerships and where they come from and what they're doing, and how they're, uh, getting involved with this, and it seems like it goes hand-in-hand with the risk, uh, assessment, because there are so many in-depth questions about the, uh, parties that would be involved.
Uh, Joel?
Um, so Stephanie, I, I got a couple statements, and then, and then I got a question. So this is a, a contract under English common law, even though it's labeled as a grant, uh, people sign it. What I'm used to like before, we don't, and it's been dismissed, and I don't expect you to do it now, is, is the financial things are covered with a performance bond, and the, the performance bond company does the background checks, uh, but the performance bond is part of a requirement to fulfill the contract. Um, and I understand that's been dismissed here, so I'm not gonna bring it up again. The, the one thing that I, um, was wondering about was, uh, as, as we move forward and, and we award the grant to whoever, um, and, uh, they're making a good faith effort, but then there's a, some kind of legal nexus that reflects poorly on the city. What is, what is the recourse at that time?
That's gonna depend on what our grant agreement contract language says and what kind of negative thing we're talking about. It's, I can't, I can't give you a, an answer without an actual scenario.
Yeah, so, um, but I would guess that there are exit ramps for, for both parties. Uh, let's, let's, geez, I don't want to drag Rogue Retreat into it, they had one example, but I won't say that. So you feel comfortable that if we do have a legal nexus that reflects poorly on the city, that, uh, this contract can handle it?
The, the contract that goes out, um, like we've talked about before, the contract is going to be individualized. There are standard terms that are presented in the packet materials.
Sure.
Depending on what the project is, is going to dictate what some of those additional terms are going to be, including recourse if the project fails, if something happens, so that the city is protected and does have some recourse if we're not getting what we have agreed to.
Yeah, or if there was some, um, like with Rogue Retreat, some, uh, definitely illegal action that was taken.
There will be outs and recourse for the city for the things that we determine are appropriate to cover with our grant agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then again, I really, please, do not, we, we are not discussing individual organizations, and I would appreciate if you didn't name them and discuss them. We are discussing a grant program that we are putting forth. The grant program is, will be put out as a request to get applicants in. This grant has been formulated as a roadmap on how the applicants can apply. Once the applicants do apply, they will be scored within the parameters of the grant that you guys have set forth, there's a scoring system. Then the top scorers will be evaluated by yourselves, the council, and before any money is awarded, an actual contract will be set forth. So you're not even at the contract stage yet, you're at the stage of putting forth the parameters on how an organization can apply for this grant money. With that, Eric?
I think this grant program is a, the, a great job was done putting it together. Uh, we need this. Clearly, we are on our own, um, as far as a city goes to fixing our, these problems that we're having. Uh, Salem, what they were busy doing today was they hired dancers to do their thing instead of repealing HB 3115. So, they chose that. We're clearly on our own, we have to do something about it. Everything I've seen so far, there's all kinds of contingencies in this plan to avoid these things from happening. We're paying 375, or 370, 400,000 minimum, whatever it is. It's a lot of money that the Grants Pass taxpayers have to pay per year. So, instead of having this chaos, this, uh, lawlessness, this, uh, drug-addicted, uh, group of homeless people here, creating all kinds of chaos, we're trying to get something done here. Like I said, we're on our own. This grant program, my opinion, is a very good way forward. Thank you.
Any further discussion, or I'd be looking for some action? Rob?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, um, uh, whether it's the non-bargaining group raises, or whether it's, um, this grant program, which I'm basically in support of, um, I'm not gonna be any less careful with taxpayer dollars than it would be with my own dollars. And I know that I wouldn't, uh, put it this way, I would never loan money that I couldn't afford to lose, number one, and it wouldn't matter to almost anyone. If I couldn't afford to lose it, I wouldn't loan it. But number two, I also wouldn't loan money to people that, um, hadn't passed a, um, my own basic, uh, we'll say, form of a personal background check. And, um, and that's all I'm trying to do here, is basically trying to be as careful with taxpayer dollars as I would be with my own dollars. It doesn't appear as if council's in support of that, uh, to a major degree. Um, I am in support of this grant, I was just hoping that we could actually do a better job of protecting taxpayer dollars. That doesn't seem to be the sentiment, but, um, I'm prepared, I'm prepared to vote yes on this. But the fact is, um, I also like to use a different analogy, you know, if I'm driving at night, I'm gonna put my headlights on. I like to see as much as I can before I actually put my foot on the accelerator, and that doesn't seem to be the sentiment, but I'll vote yes on that anyway.
Any further discussion? Indra?
Um, yes, I, I would like to second that, this is taxpayer dollars, and, um, and I'm a taxpayer too, and I'm very frugal with that. I know that, that we have the authority to spend your money, and so I take that very seriously. I don't want to spend taxpayer dollars at all, I don't want the city to be involved in the homeless, um, solution, uh, but there really, you know, when you hear solutions, there is no great solution, and we don't even know if this grant will be a solution, but we're hoping that it will be. We need something. We need something to get these encampments gone out of our downtown, and they're just a blight on our city. So to me, this is a tiny step forward, um, it's an opportunity, there will be opportunities to stop the process too. So, uh, we put this equal opportunity grant out for anyone to apply, we're going to diligently look over the applicants, um, we're going to decide, hopefully, we'll have more than one or two, or we'll be able to choose who we will think will do the best job, because it's really important to me, um, we don't want to give the grant, I don't want to give the grant to an entity that can't follow through, and then it comes back on the city, or who in a year it falls apart, and then we're left to pick up the pieces or put more money in. So it, it's very risky, but I think at this time, it's one step, I think it's worth the risk to take to see what comes of it, um, but it's not a done deal, and we have the process, um, the ability to stop it. It's a fair process to everyone, it's going to be transparent as to how it proceeds, and the applicants, all of that will be transparent as well, um, so I will be voting yes tonight.
Any further discussion? Victoria?
It is a, a great deal of money, and, um, we take that very seriously, because it's your money. We're spending that money in a way that isn't safe for the city, it isn't, um, good for the city, and, um, we want to spend it in a way that, or I want to spend it in a way that will be safe for all people involved, and will be an answer to the situation. So, uh, we have full, um, confidence that this, or I have full confidence that this grant program will open up, uh, the opportunity to have a solution for people who are experiencing homelessness, but also, the great majority of you in the city who are not, whose city has been, um, uh, taken, that you don't get to use your city the way that you should be able to, and you aren't as safe, um, in some of the areas in your city, or comfortable as you should be. And so safety, I think, is the main concern, and, uh, I believe it will have a ripple effect that will help our police and our fire department, um, the people who are currently in the camps, and for all the people who want to once again enjoy all their parks. Um, and I, it's unfortunate that we are in that, in this position, and we should not have to be. Um, our state passed House Bill 3115, and they did it in 2001 while we were making the. Our state passed House Bill 3115, and they did it in 2001 while we were making our way, this very town, up to the Supreme Court, and we won that case. They wrote that law, in my opinion, with evidence, to circumvent our win, should we win, and we did. So our next step, after I believe what will be a wonderful opportunity for the city,
Thank you. Motion is passed. Thank you very much. Okay, through, next on the items on the agenda, we're going to go into appointments.
for everyone involved, will be for citizens to work very, very hard to make sure we are
We have an appointment for two members-at-large to the non-bargaining compensation and clarification
able to repeal House Bill 3115. So overall, I think we have had much more positive feedback from citizens than we have
task force. That would be, which color? That would be your green sheet in front of you, and if you would mark two preferences
had concerns, and so I feel very comfortable in voting for this grant proposal.
on that page, sign it and pass it down, I'd most appreciate it. Thank you. I'd be bringing it back to council for discussion or a motion. Seth?
Yeah, I want to make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the addressing homelessness grant program.
And I got a second from Rick and Kathleen, Victoria. So there's a motion on the table to approve the grant program as stated, and there is a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go through a roll call vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathleen? Joel, I mean, Rick, sorry. Okay, this is for an appointment for two committee members-at-large within the public for the non-bargaining compensation classification task force. Currently, we have two strong favors. For Gordon, I so apologize, Langenbeck, Gordon Langenbeck and Byron Robinson. So I would bring it back to council for discussion and/or action. Victoria?
I move to appoint both Gordon and Byron.
Byron Robinson?
Byron Robinson.
So we have a motion to appoint Gordon Langenbeck and Byron Robertson. Any further discussion? Rick?
I didn't know, because we, I feel there's some very qualified candidates in there, if it might be appropriate to divide the vote individually rather than as a group.
Sorry, state that one more time.
Instead of a motion for two people, just make a motion for one person at a time.
Okay, perfect. Victoria, would you like to amend your motion?
Sure, I move to appoint Gordon Langenbeck.
All right, is there a second? There's a second from Rick. So there's a motion to appoint one member to the non-bargaining compensation and classification task force, Gordon Langenbeck. Any further discussion? Okay, go for a roll call vote. Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathleen? Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, so we have one more member that we want to appoint, and there is a high preference for Byron Robertson. I would be looking for a, Kathleen? Yes, please.
Yeah, I motion to appoint Byron Robertson for the committee.
And a second from Indra. Any further discussion? All right, going for the roll call vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Seth?
Yes.
Okay. We have one no and everyone yes, so majority goes. So we have two appointees to this task force, Gordon and Byron. Thank you. Next is the appointment, pink one here, appointment, non-bargaining compensation and classification task force. It would be your, your pink piece of paper, please sign and, sign it and send it down. There are only two candidates. So you don't need to sign it, since there's only two candidates, so I'd be looking to council for a nomination.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tom Bradbeer and Tom Brandis.
Perfect. Since there was only two candidates and two nominations, I'd look for a second from Rick. Any further discussion? Nope, roll call vote. Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, Tom and Tom have been appointed to the non-bargaining compensation classification task force. Thank you. Okay. Yes, Eric?
I make a motion that we do not appoint a vice president to the council.
Okay, there is a motion on the table to not proceed with the appointment of vice president. Is there a second? Kathleen seconds that. Is there any discussion in regards to that? Indra?
Yes, I was the one that brought the nomination to the agenda to the meeting tonight. I think this is important for several practical organizational and leadership reasons. It prevents, it prevents leadership gaps during emergencies or unexpected absences. It encourages shared leadership and broader responsibility within the council, represents the council at events for functions when the president is unavailable and acts as a spokesperson or liaison with the public, other government bodies, or city staff. Nominating a vice president adds a layer of checks and balances within council leadership, promotes transparency, and distributes decision-making power more evenly, reflects a well-organized, efficient governing body, and shows constituents that the council prioritizes preparedness and leadership stability. I believe our council strength lies not only in the decisions we make, but also in the leadership we demonstrate. I feel that electing a vice president is an important part of ensuring that we are prepared, professional, and united in our, in our mission to serve our constituents, and that's why I voted for it. So I would like the nomination to continue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any further discussion? We have a motion on the table to not proceed with appointing a council vice president. With a second, I will call one more opportunity for discussion before I call a roll call vote. Joel?
Well, I think this is about process and not about personalities. It's hard to separate the two sometimes. I know we had a vice president before, and it did enlarge the, the base at the monthly meetings and brought a diverse perspective, but it didn't destroy the unity of moving forward and putting things on, on the agenda. And it worked really well, and it helps the personalities that were involved back then. You know, people are people, and it helped with that situation, I felt, for the whole council and for the citizens. So, and, and I really hadn't thought too much about it till, till today, so that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Joel. Any further discussion before I call a roll call vote on the motion on the table? Indra?
I just want to clarify, the motion was to not nominate, so a yes vote means to not nominate.
You are correct, Indra. The motion on the table is to not proceed with nominating a council vice president. With a second, so a yes vote will be, will cancel the appointment. More, Victoria?
I just wanted to clarify that in agenda-setting meetings, that any and all counselors are able to attend whenever they would like to. Just clarification, that all personalities are able to attend and all, as, just speaking to what, to what Joel said, so all people are able to attend. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Rob?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment that from my perspective, in every other year that I've been on the council, whether it's been the mayor or the council president, there was a lot of communication with me as an individual counselor. They would call, ask if I understood something, or ask whether or not I, I would potentially support something, or did I have any questions, but moving forward, anything like that. And it didn't really matter, every, every single year, that was the same, and that was true when, when Joel was council president, it was true when DJ was council president, or Valerie, et cetera. Frankly, this year, I think that the communication within the council and between the council and the mayor has been really lacking. It's been by far the worst that I've seen in, in my time on the council. And it just seems as though that there's been a lot of questions as to what's actually discussed, among who, and I think that if there's another person in the room that is the right person, that actually wants to keep the council informed, I think that, that things could be improved some. But that would be, well, it's, I, I don't necessarily think that it's necessarily a long-term need, but I think that the communication between the mayor and the council, and between the council president and the rest of the council could be improved a lot.
Any further discussion? Victoria?
Just to that point, I, I would like to say to Rob that I have a very long list of texts and phone calls to you, and so maybe there's just some unwillingness, I, I don't know, or maybe it's, maybe it's a wrong phone number or a wrong text, but I just want the public to know that I have reached out extensively to people on the council, and I didn't, I just didn't want that misconception to, to stand. So thank you, Rob, and just wanted to point that out.
Any further discussion? Indra, and then Rob?
I believe just by hearing this conversation on the dais shows that we do need someone else to maybe facilitate better communication, and then we won't have any issues this way, hopefully.
And then Rob?
Yeah, just to be as clear and as transparent, and hopefully as honest as possible, after about four months of not getting any communication at all from council president, or the mayor for that matter, one day, Victoria did mention something about texting to me. I asked you what number, because I never got a text from you, and I even asked you, anyway, you never asked me for a number, I have never received a text from you knowingly, but in any event, I have had no, we've had no communication on any issues that were going to come up. You know, I, I send out emails very often to mayor council across the board if I think that there's anything I can add, if I can add clarity to a particular situation, and several of the counselors do email back or call or whatever, and with those, I continue to have dialogue. But that hasn't really been the case with the people that are in the agenda-setting meetings, and that's just my perspective. I mean, you might be thinking that you're reaching out to me constantly. I, not a single time have had, had that feeling. So I think that if, if the right person wants to be in that room to be a vice principal, vice, vice president, and actually embraces that, that, that role of trying to have everyone on the same page, or at least understand facts before we come to a meeting, I think that that might be, might be a good thing.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, are, are we going to continue to discuss, or are we going to continue to bitch and whine at each other? I'd rather, I'd rather call for a, a roll call vote here. More discussion? Okay, go ahead, Indra.
Thank you. If it eases the counselors' minds, I, Joel King has, has agreed to be the vice president. I think he would be great. He has honesty, integrity, he's been in a leadership role, he's wonderful with advice, he's given me some great advice, and I think he would be a very good mediator and communicator for the council, and I believe it would help us function more effectively. So that's what I had in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. I hate to say it one more time. Any further discussion? Thank you. We're going to do a roll call vote. There is a motion on the table to not proceed with appointing a council president. With a second, Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
So a no vote is to?
A no vote is to?
A no vote is to, a yes vote is to not appoint a council president at this time. Vice president, sorry.
Okay, no.
Kathleen?
I think you got it backwards.
The motion on the table is to not proceed forward with appointing a council president. So a yes vote for that motion will not proceed forward with a council president, or vice president.
Yes.
Yes? Rob?
No.
Indra?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
We can solve the problem either way. I'm going to vote no.
Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a tie at this moment in time. So it's incumbent on me to break the tie. I've seen previous council with a vice president, before I was appointed, Rick Riker was a vice president, and I actually thought that it would be a good idea to keep him as a vice president, because he would be a good liaison between seasoned council members that have been doing it for many years, and newer council members that were coming in. So, and I've listened to everybody here on the dais, and I believe that there is, it has been expressed that there is a breakdown in communication. So to be a steward, as a good leader, I am going to say that we should appoint, appoint a council vice president, because that may address the concerns that council members have in a breakdown in communication. So I will vote no on this, and we will proceed forward with appointing a council vice president, solely on the information that I kind of listened to tonight. So if you would take your yellow piece of paper and mark a name on it and sign it and pass it down, I would appreciate it. So, there is a preference, a strong preference for Joel King to be nominated as a council vice president within this council, so I'd look back to council members for a nomination. Indra?
I would nominate Joel King to be vice president.
Do we have a second? Second from Seth. Any further discussion? There's a nomination for Joel King to be council vice president, it has been seconded. Roll call vote, Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen? Sorry?
No.
Thank you. Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Joel would do great, but I'm gonna vote no.
Joel?
Yes.
And Victoria?
I agree, Joel, you are great, but no.
Okay, so we have five to three, so Joel is newly appointed council vice president. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the moment you've all been waiting for, and I apologize if this has taken so long, guys, public comment. This is an opportunity, this is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on items not related to a public hearing or council action item for the council. The intent is to provide information that is pertinent to the city's jurisdiction. Excuse me. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address the council as one body, not two individuals. At the conclusion of public comment, counselors will have an opportunity to respond. This meeting will proceed in an effective courteous manner, citizens and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free from slander, threats, and other personal attacks. Signs, placards, outbursts of applause, campaigning for public office, or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. If you have any questions regarding government-provided services or a current city policy, please contact the city manager's office in an attempt to resolve that matter. I have a few blue cards up here, and we're just gonna go through here. Brian Weldon, come on up, restate your name, and you have two minutes, sir, thank you.
Brian Weldon County. Yeah, I guess I spoke out of line before, but back to what I was saying earlier, there's a whole lot of unaccountability in this town, as far as what we see as Park Watch members. Morrison Park is continuing to have ODs in the bathroom, which I sent you all a letter and pictures with, 50 feet away from four little groups of children playing baseball. That's unacceptable. I think this, this new grant will be a great solution to deal with the unaccountability at our internment camps here on A Street, and 7th Street, and used to be J Street, and so on. This town is getting really, really tired of the crime, of the problems. I don't understand for the life of me how someone can accept the liability of allowing a man to live in the bushes across the street here at the Methodist Church. Is the church liable? Is the city liable? This man's crazy, and he's gonna hurt somebody. A boy was 19, 20 years old, walking by me with a big ass on his hat, and he told me I worked at Safeway, I walk by him every single day, and I get harassed. This is unacceptable in this town. This is absolutely unacceptable, and it really needs to be fixed. Park Watch is going to great measures for years to do this, to clean up our parks. We have a great program coming up here at Riverside Park. We invite all children, it's free, it's a wonderful event, but the message here is, is we get back to our children being able to use our clean, safe parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we got Shoney. Step up, restate your name, and you got two minutes, sir.
All right. Shoney Nelson, Grants Pass, Oregon. Mine's gonna be a little different this time, it was something that I was curious about, and that's gonna be over here at the police chief. And my curiosity has always been, I know we keep seeing on the boob tube, all right, or any type of anything that you watch, videos going on, all this chaos, and I know, I've had my head in the sand forever, and when I found out, it's like crazy, you guys are gonna be like, you really didn't know that Oregon was a sanctuary state? No, I didn't. And I'm wondering, you know, when it does come down to it, and ice is around, that kind of thing, how do I find out where we fall on that? And I know I can't ask you that question, but you know, maybe you can reach out to me and tell me that. I've looked, and I don't know where Grants Pass falls in that whatsoever, and I'm just curious, because it's on my mind, and I know there's a lot of things in other places where that's going on. As a matter of fact, I think this last little stand that we had out here called No Kings, that's what it was about more than anything else. And I got hit by a flagpole, my kid almost got hit by a car, and these things are supposedly nonviolent. And I wasn't even there for the rally, actually, I was there because I had to do something at the courthouse. But just wanted to let you all know, something on my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce?
Christensen.
Christensen, thank you, sir. Please restate your name, and you have two minutes.
Hi, Bruce Christensen, Grants Pass. I appreciate the hard work that you guys put in, trying to deal with all that's going on at the moment. I think the grant proposal is probably a great idea, but I think it's naive to think that it's a solution to all the problems. I think it's a great idea, and may have some positive effects on some of what's going on in the city. I mentioned that I'm a Grants Pass resident, I live in Highland Heights Estates, which is up on Highland Avenue, which immediately is adjacent or abuts the Vine Street property. And I know that there have been some rumor, conjecture about that being part of maybe the solution to some of the problems that are going on. Because that directly impacts me and my neighbors, I mean directly, my back fence, all that separates me from that property is a six-foot wooden fence. I don't, I know, I appreciate some of the concerns that were expressed about maybe the possibility of some of this going sideways, and so I would please ask you, any of the applicants for the grant money, if part of their proposal includes the Vine Street property up there, I would respectfully request that you not approve those applications. I've worked all my life for the little bit I have, the home and the property that's there, and if things go sideways, I don't want them coming over my fence and affecting my property personal, or otherwise, or the value of my property for that matter. Again, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. I do not have any other blue cards, so that would conclude our portion of general public comment, and we will proceed on to the consent agenda. I believe we have one item that was to be pulled out, and I apologize, which number was it again? D? Okay, D. So, with that aspect, we, for resolution authorizing city manager to enter into an intergovernment agreement with ODOT for Phase III of ADA pedestrian upgrade projects. Since you wanted to pull that out, Indra, is there something specific you're looking for from staff, or do you just want to discuss it?
Yes, so some of the project is for the little ramps on the crosswalks on 6th Street, and I live in that neighborhood where some of that has been done, and it's not good, and so I have concerns about, it's narrowed the streets, specifically, I'm talking about Manzanita. I mean, am I supposed to discuss, or Aaron, I guess my question was, with, when we're dealing with ODOT, do we, is that an automat, what are the consequences, I guess, if we say no to that? And I would like a discussion on it, I guess.
I can provide a little bit of context, so not all of the intersections will get bump outs that are addressed in this particular project. I would guess more than half, but less than three-quarters of them, will get some level of bump out at the curb intersections. Some of those strictly for pedestrian to be more visible, some of them because they can't get the ADA grades that they need without bumping out into the road, because they're just so tight to the buildings, so that's why some of them are. The bump outs aren't done on every intersection, just because, but where they are, where they have a lot of walking traffic, or where they don't have turn lanes, to, where there's a turn lane, they won't put a bump out, because of course, you don't have the room for it. So it is a mix, it is not, as I said, all of them. We could work with ODOT to try and reduce that number, this is their transportation system, and it is their curb ramps that they are improving. I would think one of the things that they might look to do is push back. One of the things that they have wanted us to do for years, and we have resisted, is to take over jurisdiction of 6th and 7th Street. And as the city of Grants Pass, or as your Public Works Director, I would highly recommend that we never take jurisdiction of 6th and 7th Street. It is just a very, very, very expensive road to operate and maintain. And so with that, they're gonna probably want to implement their design, they are under a court order to improve all of these curb ramps, and as I said, some of them probably have to be upgraded with bump outs, some of them, we might be able to ask them to eliminate, but right now, it's not all of them, so it is a mix. That's probably not the answer that you wanted, but it's all the information I have, kind of at my fingertips.
And can you clarify, Jason, too, when, you're talking about ODOT jurisdiction, that's not through the whole town, can you explain ODOT's jurisdiction?
It is on 6th and 7th, it is the, 6th and 7th Street are ODOT jurisdiction, they are a state highway.
So you said the court ordered them to? What court ordered them to? And why?
Yeah, the years, this is going back, I don't know how many years, maybe even 10 years, they were sued by a disability rights organization that all of the curb ramps in Oregon did not meet ADA accessibility requirements. And since then, they have had to go, I think they're actually under an injunction, and they have to have all of the curb ramps in the state of Oregon that front ODOT roads brought up to standards, and this is the last group in Grants Pass that are under ODOT jurisdiction that would need to be done.
Okay, I'm just, I just bring it up, I'm concerned, because as I said, specifically on Manzanita, it goes out so far, it's a danger, the road is so narrow, you really can't even make a right turn onto Manzanita from 6th without hitting a car that's there, you kind of have to wait. And I went, I actually drove through town, looking at the malls, some are fine, but it looks like what we have there is fine, I've never seen anyone stuck or not able to get across safely, I don't, so I just, I, I'm not in favor of that. I don't know what other counselors think, but I think it's a waste of money, and that's our taxpayer dollars, and of course, we don't want the state to come down on us, but at what point do we just say, no, this isn't what our community wants? I don't know.
Can you clarify, and I know the intersection you're talking about by the new gas station in Dollar General, when you actually tried to turn into Manzanita, I have a little bit bigger truck, and I clip that all the time, but I understand it, but this, all the ODOT improvements, those are actually funded by ODOT, correct? So this is none of our money, sorry.
This is 100% funded by ODOT, there is no Grants Pass dollars in any of this project.
ODOT gets taxpayer money from the state, correct?
Gas tax revenues or federal dollars, correct, yes.
Correct, but we don't have any jurisdiction over those tax dollars. That's all of the point I was trying to get. Okay, so with that discussion, are, Indra, are you good to keep this on the consent agenda?
Does anyone else have anything to say? I don't know. Can we vote on it separately, I guess?
Rick, did you have the way in?
I'd just like to provide some comments, I was on the MPO for over five years, and saw the dynamics that went through with the lawsuit with ODOT. As has already been stated, it was like $23 million that ODOT has to spend, to spend to improve these ADA ramps. Yes, I agree, I'm not ecstatic about how the design occurred, but again, the location, the property in which the ramps are going in is ODOT property, it's not city property, and they're spending ODOT money, not, while it is taxpayer money, it is subject to this lawsuit, and I'm not gonna go into what the consequences would be if we were to stop it, so I will be in favor of it, thank you.
Indra?
Jason, is there any way, do we have any say on how far, like, some are really, that one is really far out, and some aren't, do we have any say on that?
I would think that we can certainly try to work with them, you know, ODOT is oftentimes gonna do what ODOT is, but they also are fairly cooperative, so if there are any that are exceptional, I know in my quick look through the plans, and I would have brought them, but the plan set was like 300 and some pages, so it was a hefty, hefty document, there were some that were very, very shallow, less than half a lane width, but there were others that were pretty much almost a full lane width. So maybe what we can do is work with them selectively to keep those as narrow as possible, expressing your guys' preference to minimize their impact. But as I said, some of them, they needed that extra room just to get the grades for the ADA ramps, but others, they probably can shrink down for us.
I'm okay keeping it on consent.
Okay, thank you. Can we have the consent agenda up on the screen? So we have a consent agenda as listed, I would be looking to council for action. Indra?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed on the screen, and within your packets, do we have a second? Second from Seth. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And Seth?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda passes. At this moment in time, on the, our tonight's agenda, we need a motion to adjourn and reconvene into the urban renewal agency meeting.
I move to end the meeting, and adjourn, and go into the urban renewal meeting.
Got a second on that? Rick? All right, Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, we have adjourned the city council public meeting, and have now convened urban renewal agency meeting. All right. At this moment in time, at this time, I will open a public hearing to consider the application as five...
Mayor, we don't need to read that.
Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead. Then I will turn it over to Aaron to keep, proceed forward.
Mayor, I'd like to suggest maybe we do the grant first, and then I'll move into the public hearing for the urban renewal agency, and then incorporate that with the resolution like we did with the budget.
Okay.
And so if we could, can we move the board action B first?
So we will proceed with the resolution awarding Russell Co. DBA Renew Medical Athletics LLC, a building rehab and restoration grant to property located at 1212 Northeast 7th Street, and I will pass over the mic to you.
Thank you, members of the URA board. So we have before you tonight a request for a grant. This is related to the property on 7th Street, just north of Manzanita. So the request tonight is a matching grant, up to 25% of the total eligible costs, not to exceed $50,000. The board has seen a few of these so far, we have, the last couple of years, allocated $250,000 in the URA budget for grants to private sector projects, and this is, this is one of those. They are proposing, in this case, to upgrade the, some exterior improvements, some plumbing, electrical upgrades, roof repairs... electrical upgrades, roof replacement, ADA, and some site plan review fees. This is a property located at 1212 Northeast Seventh and it relates to the council goal of economic growth. So in December of '23, the property was purchased by Russell and Rachel Cod. This is a new business for Renew Medical Aesthetics. It is a business, been in, had a registration for some time. They just started operating currently at another location. So they are temporarily at another location until they can complete the improvements. This is where they would like to have their, their permanent location. So they applied under the Building Rehabilitation and Restoration Project for the Urban Renewal Grant and Loan Program. So here's the site. Again, this is Northeast Manzanita on the bottom of the screen here. And so this is just two doors up. Erickson Dental is adjacent to the north there. So the upgrades that they're looking to do, exterior improvements, stucco paint and siding, plumbing replacement, electrical upgrades, roof replacement, ADA accessibility, and site plan review. We do have a maximum in the grant guidelines under the, under the site plan review for no more than $5,000. Some of the reasoning that they provided as to why the board should approve this grant, it will activate a commercial building, get it ready for, for new business, improves the, the building elevation that faces a state highway, which we just talked about, Northeast Seventh Street, allows for an expansion of their medical aesthetic services to include functional medicine. And then they are proposing, or not proposing, they anticipate adding six new jobs at this, at this location. It will give them more square footage than what they currently have, so will allow them to add some new jobs. So here's the elevation today, a residential type structure, previously a dental office and insurance, I believe, in the past. Here is the proposed elevation that they are looking to do. They have a architectural rendering here. You can see there will add quite a few windows that would face Seventh Street as well as add quite a bit of stucco work there. And then interior is the existing floor plan here. And the next slide shows they have a proposed remodel showing some of their offices on the back. Here they have a fairly large lobby that would be accessed right off of Seventh Street. Cost implication for the FY '25 budget, as I mentioned, $250,000 has been appropriated so far in this fiscal year. 160, about 164,000 has been awarded. So 85,000 remaining today. So this grant request is kind of the total project coming in about $367,000. Some of that is not eligible. The Urban Renewal Board has some grant guidelines that say things that are and are not eligible. Several of those are not. So that puts their eligible expenses as about 265,000. 25% of that would exceed the 50,000. So if they come in with all of those, this would be a $50,000 grant. And these are reimbursement grants, by the way. Call to action is tonight for the board and there's a potential motion on the screen.
Thank you. Counsel, have any questions?
Thank you.
Seeing none? Is there anybody in the audience that wants to weigh in on public comment on this specific topic?
We were called by the Cods a couple hours before the meeting tonight. They knew that it was happening, but they were not able to make it.
Okay, I appreciate that information. I see no public comment. I'll bring it back to counsel for deliberation or action. Joel and then Indra.
Brad, I just had one quick question. Are they trying to add a primary care office or are they sticking to their specialty or, or, I'm just out of curiosity, we really need primary care?
Yeah, no, my understanding is it would not include primary care.
So the nurse practitioner then would, would just be with the aesthetics?
For the, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
And then Indra?
It might have said in here, do we know what year is that building?
The original?
Yeah. Or when was the last remodel year? Do we know that?
I don't have that available at my fingertips here. I can probably find it, but it would take a few minutes.
Any further questions, Kathleen and then Indra? Nope. Kath, or Indra, you have another question? I mean, or discussion?
I guess, I'm just going to say my, I'm familiar with the set. Erickson Dental did a really nice remodel recently. I feel like those buildings are nice and we would be giving a grant to just help them remodel in the way that they want to set up their new business in this building. And for me, the purpose of the Urban Renewal dollars is to upgrade a, a building that's blighted or, or really needs an upgrade, not just to remodel for a specific purpose for that, but also that would bring in visitors and people into our city and help business grow. So they're already going to go there. I just, I don't know. I just don't see this project as the type of, of URA money I would like to see it spent
Any further discussion?
Anytime somebody updates a building to current features and aesthetics, I think is a real plus for the community and just the activity alone can spur other improvements. And that's the real basis for the Urban Renewal Agency is for improvements within the town and encourage other businesses. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to disagree with Rick just a little bit. I think that the, the whole basis of tax income and financing is to increase the tax base with every, with every investment. And whether that was the Parkway, you know, with our URA from 1988 or any other URA situation. We had farmland that was, that was basically bringing in almost no taxes and now we've got a lot of, it's a much higher taxed area. And the same thing would be true here. As these buildings are more valuable, they're going to be assessed much higher and they're going to bring in more tax dollars, which then actually becomes a good deal for the taxpayer. Otherwise, the tax income financing actually just hurts us in a lot of different ways. It prevents, you know, it diminishes public safety funding and it does a lot of other negative things. But if in the long run, we've increased the tax base with these investments, that's actually the, I think the thinking behind it. So I understand Indra's point that these buildings are far from blighted and it's, you know, you'd like to see these, these dollars be used for a blighted situation that gets turned around in a dramatic way. But if they do increase the assessed value, then basically the URA has done its job.
Any further discussion? Indra?
That's true. It'd be nice if we had unlimited funds for URA and we could give it to everyone, but we have limited funds. And so I think there's so many other projects and applicants that might be a better fit for the money than where if we just give it on a first come, first served basis to everyone that applies, we might have people missing out that could really use it. That's all of my concern.
Kathleen?
How many other applicants would there be currently or on the horizon?
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of the question, counselor?
How, how many applicants would there be currently or kind of in the, in the pool other than these people?
Yeah, so the Economic Development Division is, you know, in pretty frequent conversations with property owners. There is currently, I think, one or two that are in conversation with us, but that haven't, you know, formally applied. For, for these four URA projects that are private sector oriented grants, we have not, you know, the board has, has not set up a, you know, an annual grant program. It is just sort of open. The guidelines are out there. And so as businesses, you know, sort of face a need or, you know, they're preparing for a new tenant, that's often what triggers them to come to us and have a conversation because they've somehow learned about the program. So, so, you know, it just kind of changes depending on what time of year and what, how many there might be in the queue.
So these, this particular business, they've moved out of their location because electrical is faulty or plumbing is outdated or it seems like there's something why they would have had to move and not be able to stay in their building. Is there something like that going on?
My understanding is that the, that's a space, more of a space limitation than the temporary where they're at. They want to expand into more square footage so they can add more offices and more kind of clinical space. Not, not that it was really driven by electrical or other kind of building failure.
Eric and then Seth?
So the, this has been out for, for how long? For the, for the last year, right?
The, the grant?
Yes. So people have been applying and it's kind of a use it or lose it type of thing? Is that correct?
Well, not really. I mean, the, the 250,000 that is allocated in the URA budget is, is there and available, but it's, you know, if, if it doesn't, and in fact, we haven't, in the last three years, we haven't used up the full 250 in a year. We're getting pretty close this year if, if this gets approved, but.
And this, the word gets out to everybody and the individuals that requested it, they've applied, obviously, and there's no other takers, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Seth?
Yeah, Kathleen, I can answer some of what you've asked about the, are they moving locations? They're starting up, so this is a new, a new business. And so they just bought this property. I don't know the exact timeline. I'd be for this though, I mean, I, they're, they're not skimping on the budget. I've seen deeper or more in-depth plans on what they are planning to do on the exterior and interior of this project. So I think in terms of just, you know, the, the appeal, when you're driving up Seventh Streets, it's going to be great for Grants Pass.
Victoria?
I think that you also mentioned that this is going to increase some employment, some. Did I miss here?
No, you did not miss here. Yeah, that, that's what their application stated. Yep, six, six jobs.
So a little context, this building used to house a dental office for many, many, many years and it was, looks, it looks like a residence. That dental office left probably three, maybe four years ago and it was unoccupied for a long period of time. The insurance lounge, I believe, across the street had utilized that for a little while as, as an office space, would never upgrade it. Yes, it is right next door and touches Erickson Dental, which Erickson Dental actually utilized some of our grant programs to upgrade their facade and their facility, which, which greatly impact their, their patient base. And yes, this is a new business startup. I believe the husband is actually a veterinarian in the area too, so I think they're both new to this area and it would definitely be an upgrade to Sixth Street. That is kind of like dental medical row in that area. So the grant money that the neighboring dentist, Erickson Dental, used definitely increased his production and his clientele and this new facility will, like I said, it's a startup. It'll actually employ people, so that's, that's a benefit to it too. With that, any further discussion or, or action? Indra?
I guess one last question. So approve a grant request for up to 50,000. Does that mean it is 50,000 or we could say 30,000 or 10 or what? Or modify? Does modify mean change the amount, but up to means 50,000?
That, that's correct. Yep. And that would only be if they submit receipts that comply with the grant guidelines. And so sometimes they come back and submit a receipt and, you know, it's not an eligible cost, so that would drop the cost. But it, but if you approved it as the resolution is, it would be up to 50,000.
And clarify, it is a matching grant?
Correct.
So they would have to come up with the rest of their funding and their proof that it was there? So the resolution would be actually just putting a ceiling on the amount of the grant?
Right.
Joel?
Unless there was more discussion, I was ready to make a motion. Okay, I move to approve the resolution of the Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency awarding Russell Cod DBA R E N U Medical Aesthetics LLC, a building rehabilitation and restoration grant for property located at 1212 Northeast Seventh Street.
And I got a second from Victoria. So we have a motion on the table to approve the grant up to $50,000 for this particular piece of property. With a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Thank you. And Aaron will take back over.
All right, this is the portion of the meeting where I'll be talking to you and finalizing the Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency's budget for fiscal year '26, incorporating this public hearing with the Board Action for a resolution adopting the approved budget, making appropriations, and approving tax increment collections. This is a requirement as part of Oregon Budget Law that we have this public hearing and it's also needed to approve the full tax increment financing for the city to be Really, when it comes to this, we have four main goals, fiscal stability, economic growth, housing and homelessness and infrastructure that are focused on urban renewal. May 20th, you did receive the budget message. May 20th, the Budget Committee approved the budget. This provides some flexibility for the outlaw grant opportunities like what you just looked at and some future projects like we discussed earlier in this week in the workshop. June 18th, it's scheduled to, for you to adopt the budget. So in front of you here is the budget. This is in the packet and this just is providing a background. And really, the breakdown of this is that we are trying to provide you with the most opportunity to special payments out of $7 million, $7.8 million to allow the most flexibility for you to utilize urban renewal dollars as things come up. The Budget Committee's tenet approval will be for the allocation of the $9,64,000 in the above categories, providing maximum flexibility. The table above is the current project plan. We went over some of that, but it does provide for that maximum flexibility for you. Urban Renewal Agency is an economic development tool. It helps remove blight, creates economic opportunities, brings state resources and money to Grants Pass and accomplishes council's goals in the community. So you have a couple of actions that we're looking for once you've taken public comment and that is to approve a resolution to adopt the fiscal year budget and there's going to be a motion for you there. We also have another action for you and that is to approve the resolution authorizing Josephine County Treasurer to include Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency property tax receipts in their investment program. So I'll go back to Counsel Action One and we can discuss that after you receive public comment and have questions.
You guys have, staff have, I mean, so does counsel have any questions so far? Rick?
So Aaron, if we have questions on this, wait till after public comment or?
You, you can, if you have questions now, you can ask questions now of the, of the presentation or the Urban Renewal Agency and then we can do public comment, yes.
Okay, one of the things is for.
Okay, one of the things is for our monies to be invested by the county before we receive them, is that the procedure?
No, what we're, what we're doing is we're, you're doing two things. One, you're approving the resolution, adopting the budget, and then another thing we have to do is we do also have to make a motion to prove that, that we participate in the county's tax increment program, so they will, they will take those dollars and, and assess those dollars for the Urban Renewal Agency.
I have further questions on that program.
Okay.
How does it work?
Yeah, so the city does our billing for property taxes, collects it for all the districts, actually, and then it distributes it through electronic means, which is our, what is called an investment pool. So that's what it's saying, is that they can collect our money, house it in something that everybody in the state has, and distribute it that way, rather than writing everybody checks.
Oh, so it's not that they're gonna go invest it in the stock market or something like that? It's?
No, it's 100% secure, safe. There's ORSs that allow for counties and cities to hold up to a specific number, I think it's in the 50s of millions. So it sits there, it has its own rate, and then again, they just distribute our, our portion of the funds.
Okay, thank you, that answered my question. Bye.
Any further questions before we go to public comment? Okay, now there's opportunity for the public to address the council and Urban Renewal Agency Board in regards to this topic, which is the Urban Renewal Agency Approved Budget 2026. Anybody want to step up to the microphone and make public comment in regards to this? Please state your name, and you have two minutes.
Mark Hannah. Is, is this the public you guys are asking?
Absolutely, sir. So, so we got.
For a $9 million urban renewal investment?
Thank you for your comments, sir. I don't see any other public comments, so we'll hand it back over to you, sir.
All right, so Mayor, as mentioned, there's two actions. We would do the first by approving the budget, and there's a motion in front of you.
Okay, I would look to council for any discussion and/or action. So would be looking for a motion, or if you had any discussion? Rick?
Like to make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2026 budget, make appropriations, and authorize the full amount of tax increment collections.
And I have a second from Seth. So we have a motion on the table to approve with a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor. And the, the final one for this is call to action number two with a potential motion in front of you.
Okay, back to the council. Any further discussion or action? Joel?
I move to approve the resolution to participate in the county's tax investment program.
And a second by Eric. We have a motion on the table to approve, and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so that takes care of our public hearing and Board of Actions for the Urban Renewal Agency, and we have a consent agenda item. Can we have that on the screen? Or is that?
We, we just voted on that.
Okay. I didn't know that you pulled it out. Thank you, sorry about that. Okay, at this moment in time, our business in the Urban Renewal Agency is concluded. I would be looking for a motion to adjourn and reconvene in city council meeting. Thank you, Kathleen.
I make a motion to adjourn from the urban renewal and open up our regular business meeting.
Thank you, and a second? Rick? All right, it's been motioned and seconded to adjourn and reconvene as a city council meeting. Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, we are back in our regular city council meeting, and next on the agenda is matters for mayor, council, and staff. Counselors, anything to add? Discuss. Indra?
I just want to again put out, because Brian from Park Watch, and we heard solutions, and I just want to put out, you know, we are doing the grant, hoping that it will help with the situation, but there are still many unknowns. And even if the grant goes forward through the whole process, there's a lot that can happen that we don't know about, that have been talked about already amongst the constituents and the council. People can still refuse, they can still go to the parks. I mean, so it doesn't solve all of the issues, but we're hoping it will help with the majority of the issues. And then I would like to bring up, in this, this we got on the dais last, was it at the workshop? Aaron, will you address this? Because our city logo is on it as our partner.
Yeah, Indra, Stephanie can weigh in on that, because I believe she's already addressed that.
Thank you.
That has been addressed, and mayor council has been copied on the email correspondence with all involved.
Oh, sorry, I just want the public to know, because we're not partners, and so it's very confusing for people when they see that, because they think the city has partnered. And so I just wanted to make it clear that the city has not partnered, that I know about.
Joel?
I just want to be really quick. A lot of good people, working in good faith, trying to build good relationships, healthy relationships, moving forward to make Grants Pass a better place. So that's what it's about, and that's where we're headed.
Any further matters for counselor? Rob?
Yeah, just very briefly to follow up on what Indra said. I mean, when Pathways puts out something with Grants Pass logo on it, great frankly, it just makes it look like the fix is in. It makes, looks like they've already gotten the grant, or that they have an inside track, because for some reason, they felt comfortable enough to put their, you know, our, our logo on their promotional piece. So it just, why wouldn't the public or other people that might apply for that grant be suspicious? It makes it look like the fix is in.
Any other counselor? All right, seeing none, anything from staff? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Indra, do we have a second? All right, everybody want to adjourn? Put your thumb in the air. Thank you. Everybody go home.